Our work session of the Board of Education. This is Joe Soyo, President of the Board of Education, speaking. Thank you for attending in person or through Zoom. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you notice if today's meeting is provided to the public and each member of the Board of Education is required by law? Tina, will you please take attendance? Present.
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 Tonight, I'm going to hand the microphone over to start. We have a presentation on the Student Achievement Report. So Dr. Sinha, will you please take us out?
Sure, thank you. And again, every year, we dedicate one of our work sessions to our Student Achievement Report. So this evening, we'll provide a thoughtful review of our ongoing efforts to support student success. We continue to be one of the top-performing school districts in New York State, ranking in the top 5% in the 3 through 8 assessments, along with our results at the secondary level. Our students' outcomes reflect the collective dedication of our educators, students, and families. Our exiting outcomes continue to be an area that we're very proud of, which Mr. Stein-Grubner will talk about shortly. While these accolades are gratifying, they also serve as a reminder of our responsibility to maintain high standards and continually strive for improvement. Also wanted to take a moment to thank our teachers, staff, for their hard work to create learning environments where students can thrive. They build and nurture deep connections and genuinely care for our students. And these are qualities that cannot be measured, but are deeply, deeply valued in our district. And of course, our parents, they are always our true partners in this important journey. And all of our administrators that are here, our principals, our coordinators, our APs aren't here, our special ed administrators that are here, work very, very closely with teachers to maintain a united focus on student success. Their leadership and collaboration are instrumental in fostering excellence in every classroom. I said no, thank you both for being here, our Assistant Principals. And our Board of Education, of course, your focus on student success is very much appreciated. And it's seen in the decisions that we collectively make here at board meetings. So some of the strengths that we will be talking about this evening are high levels of proficiency and mastery across state and national assessments, with AP participation and performance exceeding state and global averages. Regents' mastery rates that consistently place us among the highest on Long Island and New York State. And our students gaining foundational skills in literacy and numeracy. And then our commitment to college and career readiness. Strong AP participation and performance. Robust dual enrollment programs, offering college credit opportunities in multiple disciplines. Now, we want to be sure that our literacy has strong alignment, some of our areas of our focus, with the latest evidence-based practices and remain at the cutting edge of instructional practices. So we will be enlisting support from an outside literacy expert to review our comprehensive approach to literacy. And the expert will provide feedback and recommendations to help us refine our programs and ensure they align with the latest research and best practices. And I believe we had talked about that earlier in the year. And then in terms of our addressing achievement gaps, particularly for our students requiring additional supports, that remains a priority for us. And as New York State transitions to the next-generation standards, which has started, those assessments, we are working on that as a focus area for us. And so this evening, we'll be sharing how we plan to build on our strengths and thoughtfully address areas that merit further attention to ensure our schools continue to excel. And I do, before I hand it over to Dr. Bowman, she has done an exceptional job in putting this together, this report for us together, working closely with all the administrators. So thank you for that. And also, this is your first report. And so she has brought some additional insights for us, as this is new for us. So thank you. Dr. Bowman, I'm going to hand it off to you.
Thank you, Dr. Sinha, and thank you to the Board of Education for this opportunity. I also, before I get started, have to thank all of the administrators who have really worked as a team to help make sure that we were prepared for tonight and also for the work that you do every day in the service of our children. As this is my first Student Achievement Report, it has provided me with the opportunity to immerse myself in Garden City academics from a K-12 perspective. And so what did I find? I found that the student achievements that we celebrate, and there are many, are the work of an entire team, administrators, teachers, families, and of course, our students. Garden City High School graduates are by and large products of 13 years of care, professional expertise, and deep commitment to excellence. In Garden City, there is no such thing as resting on your laurels, as evidenced by the increased graduation rate this year from 99.8% to 99.8% graduation. And Garden City students are very well-prepared for higher education in their careers, as evidenced by alumni reports every single year. As in any organization, there's always room for growth. And as you'll see, across the board, we have analyzed the data, identified areas of strength, seeking how we can replicate that success, and found areas where we're focusing our attention, all in the service of children. So. All the work that we do here in Garden City is grounded in the mission and vision. And so our kids, we are committed to supporting our students as they strive to achieve the optimal level of academic, social, and personal success and achieve their personal best. Before we get started on the formal presentation, I think it's important to take a few minutes to talk about how we measure student learning. There are multiple ways that you measure student learning, based on what's going on in the classroom every day. When we have classroom assessments, those sometimes take the form of teachers assessing student learning in the moment and making instructional shifts responsibly. Those are mainly informal and formative assessments. Classroom assessments also include traditional classroom assessments, such as tests, quizzes, essays, projects. But those are not the kinds of things that we see on a Student Achievement Report for the Board of Education. What we focus on, on these kinds of presentations, are the district-selected standardized assessments, which here in Garden City is the NWEA. Through 5th grade, we use the universal screener three times a year. Although, in this presentation, you'll see that we focus on spring to spring so that we can compare students over time and see how they've accomplished grown. In 6 through 8, we do two times a year. The reason for that is that our 6th through 8th graders, at the end of the year, are oftentimes sitting for Regents' exams and other assessments. And so we want to make sure that we have ample time for that as well. The third bucket that you look to see, that you'll see here in the Student Achievement Report, are standardized tests. And that really is the summative data that does really bear our attention. It includes AP exams, Regents' exams, our state assessments in ELA, math, and science. As I said, tonight, we'll focus on these last two groups, the district-selected standardized assessment and also the other standardized assessments. Before I give the microphone over to Mr. Stein-Grubner, who will start with the high school, I just want to say that change is the only constant that's true right now in education when you're looking at assessments. We are recently finishing making shifts from paper-based tests to computer-based tests, which comes with some shifts in how students approach test-taking and those experiences. We are also in the midst of shifting from the Common Core learning standards to the next-generation learning standards and the associated change in exams as well. When appropriate, in this presentation, we have year-over-year data to share. However, where the magnitude of the changes renders that comparison impossible, we've removed prior years because we don't want it to look as though we can measure apples and oranges. Last note, there are 76 slides in tonight's presentation. Instead of going through each slide, in the interest of getting us home before Christmas, I'll be leaving each slide up for a few seconds. And our principals will speak to them as a whole. Of course, the entire presentation will be posted to our website as well. So, Mr. Stein-Grubner, you are.
Can I ask a question on a comment you made? Taking tests on computers, recognize it's a challenge. I know, I think it's particularly challenging. Is there anything that we do or don't do, or things we can improve on to help that transition, particularly for early learners?
Sure. So some of the things that we do already is that we are, some of the things, we already have platforms available to students that create opportunities for them to practice the different tools, like highlighting, like switching between screens, like using calculators, even using a stylus to write constructed responses. All of that is practice on how to use a device. But it is something that is already embedded instruction when it is related to what's going on in the classroom. There are also simulations. We have a simulation happening in January. I forget exactly what week it is. But each year, the state sends out a simulation. And so the students are given an opportunity, and the school is given, each of the schools is given an opportunity for a dry run so that you can tweak any issues that might be coming up from a technology perspective, but also take a look at what the kids' experiences are and provide any supports that they might need that way.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm sorry, just to piggyback. How do our current assessments and tasks, projects kind of align to that with the utilization of the computer?
So those are very specific to the assignment that's given. Surely, attention is paid to make sure that the tools are available to the students and that they have access to making sure that they know how to use them. But the focus of daily instruction is going to be, what's the end game of this activity? What's the end game of this event? The instructional event that's happening? And if it seems, if the goal includes using technology in order to get there, then that's what happens. But certainly, there is explicit instruction on how to make sure you know how to use the tools. Does that answer the question? Okay.
All right.
Good.
Yeah, it's off to you, Kevin.
Okay, I got it.
He's ready.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for having us present tonight. And just to start talking about technology and exams, moving to that. At the high school level, we have been seeing that slow progression of change over to exams being on computer. So SATs are moving in that direction this year. They will be all digital. AP exams are moving in that direction. We did it over COVID, and then it went back to paper, and now it's slowly moving on to digital. Regents' exams are not there yet. It was supposed to be done, I think, by 2015. But it's a very slow progression to get there. But it's happening at that level, little by little, and not all at once, at least. So again, Regents are still paper and pencil and pen at this point. All right, so looking at our presentation, and our first slide is our very end. So this is our graduation rates. So what you see here are two years, the last two years, 2023 on the left, 2024 on the right. And our numbers, like Dr. Bowman said, it was 99% in 2023. And we improved on the 99% to go to 99.8%, which is very good. The other bars you see for each are, what do we have? New York State and Nassau County. All right, so you can see that our numbers are higher. And that's, fortunately, and we're blessed, and I'm humbled, that's the trend we're going to see throughout the high school numbers. The more red you see on these graphs tonight, the better. And you're going to see a lot of red, and that's a good thing. All right, so AP exam participation. So these are the highest-level exams that we offer. And these are national and even global exams. And what we see are four different sets of bars there. And these are all big picture. And they're showing the last three years for comparison to ourselves. And what we see from the left are a total amount of AP students. And last year, we had 628, which is pretty similar to what we've had. And that's over half of all of our students that are taking AP exams. In the second set of bars there, it is the number of exams. And we are over 1,500 exams, close to 1,600. And that's been pretty steady. It's a lot of exams we're giving. The next, the lower, is the AP students earning three or above on the exams. And that's 565 last year, which is slightly better than it was the last couple of years. It's a slight improvement, which is amazing. That half of our school, freshmen basically aren't even taking AP exams. Some are, they get to choose to be in there. But as a whole, freshmen aren't taking it. Sophomores is only a small amount, maybe a third that are in. So we're seeing a large amount of our students in the upper classes that are scoring three and above. And sometimes, that means college credit for our students. And then finally, on the right, is the percentage of total AP students earning three or above. And that's where we saw a large change this year, large in the sense that it's over like a bit of a percent. It's a 4% jump from 85 to 89. Almost 90% of all of our students, as they graduate, are earning three or above on AP exams, which is amazing. And again, we compare ourselves with ourselves and not the region because it's nothing to compare again. It's true. And again, I'm humbled to say it, but I'm very proud of the work that our students and staff do in preparation for this every year. So for the second year in a row, the second year that the College Board has offered this new awards program, they call it the AP School Honor Roll. It started in 2023. And for the second year in a row, we earned the Platinum, which is the highest-level score possible. And so these are our numbers from last year to this year. Again, red is this year, and we improved in each of those areas. These are, the white lines you see on there are the minimum required to meet the status of Platinum. So we are well above the minimum requirement to meet that. And again, only eight schools on Long Island earned Platinum last year. All right, our Scholar Report. These are individual honors for students. I'm going to start all the way on the right because that shows the total amount of AP scholars. This is the most we've ever had, ever. Like 310 students were AP scholars, right? And that means they're taking multiple exams and scoring high on these multiple exams. And as we shift to the left and go down that way, these are the graphs, the bars, that add up to the total on the right. So AP Scholars with Distinction is the highest honor. And that means students are taking eight or more exams and scoring four and above as an average. And then AP Scholars with Honor and AP Scholars total. So our AP Scholars with Distinction, which is the highest individual honor a student can earn, we had 143, which is ridiculous. A lot of schools are proud to have one AP Scholar with Distinction, and we have 143. It's really hard to comprehend when we show these numbers year after year, what a big deal it is to score this high. So we're very proud of our students for those. All right, again, red is good. And we're going to see by subject area each of these following slides. So we saw art, and then we see English. We have language and literature. Our numbers improve in almost every exam over the past three years. Then we see math. Then we see science, environmental science, biology. There's another science slide there. Chemistry was at 100% for the second year in a row. Physics is always very high. And these are high-performing, top students that we have in the school. World history, US history. These are, you know, over half of the grades taking these AP exams and these courses. Macroeconomics, we see the numbers improving year over year. US government and politics, we see big improvements year over year. We also see an increase in the number of students that are taking these exams. So those are all senior classes there. Another social studies slide, European history, psychology, human geography. These exams are interesting because they're not your typical top students. They're not elite students that are taking these courses. These are elective courses. They're open to anyone to take. And I mentioned earlier, there's not many freshmen that take AP exams. Human geography is one of those exams that freshmen are taking. AP Psychology is juniors and some seniors in there. These are not your typical AP students. These are not the students that are, you know, at the top with their average of the class, but their scores on the AP Psychology exam, over 150 of these students are scoring at the, you know, the highly proficient levels with fours and fives. In computer science, we have two computer science courses. Our numbers of students in these courses are low. We're trying to build them back up and trying to rebuild what we have there. Principals is the newer course. It's like the friendlier type of course. The AP Computer Science A is computer programming, and that has fewer students in it. Overall, the analysis of our Advanced Placement exams, there's a number called the Quality Index. We're not presenting that number because it's very difficult to even understand what it means, and not a lot of schools look at their Quality Index to explain it. But basically, it tells us that we have very high participation rates. Like I said, it's not just elite students. It's over half of our students taking AP exams, which is one piece of the index. And then the other piece is our excellent achievement. So we're scoring high. So we have students that are not your typical AP students scoring very high on exams, which gives us a high-quality index. And we see our Quality Index rising each year, even as more and more students are participating. And this year, I'll tell you, our 2025 numbers, we're going to have even more students and more exams than we had this year and the year before and the year before. And our overall population of the school is lower than it has been over the past 10 years. So we're moving in a direction where it's normal to take AP exams in our school, and it's normal to achieve at the highest level. Now, our Quality Index, the third point there, overall, is double the schools in our area. And in some of our courses, our biggest courses that we have, statistics, macroeconomics, AP Literature, senior course, AP BC Calculus, a senior course, and Psychology. So we have 100, 150 students taking these and scoring very high. And our Quality Index is triple what the typical schools in our area are. Again, that's not a score that is ever publicized, but I'm saying it tonight because it's a big deal to us. All right, our Dual Enrollment Courses. These are courses that students can take and earn college credit in our high school at the same time they're taking high school courses. So they sit in class here, and our teachers are able to act as professors for these colleges. So we work with Adelphi, we work with Rochester Institute of Technology, and we work with St. John's University. St. John's is the World Language Courses. Our business courses are through Adelphi, and our Project Lead the Way are through RIT. So we have AP and college level, all weighted very high. And over 750 enrollment are taken by students. Not 750 individual students. Some students take more than one college-level course. But that means there's that many opportunities for students to earn college credit. This goes on the transcript as college credit. And it's very beneficial for many of our students. The Regents' Exams. So we're going to start by saying the exams are constantly changing. They've always been changing since the 80s. I know the exams have changed every few years, right? Sequential math, right? A and then 1, 2, and now it's algebra and geometry and Algebra II. It's the same thing in every area. With the sciences, they'll be changing over the next few years. The maths are in the process of changing. ELA just changed, and that'll be changing again in a few years. So as we constantly see these changes, our teachers are adjusting their curriculum, they're adjusting their syllabus, which is a challenge in that sense. It's not like people are like just figuring out how to teach these tests every year. They're constantly learning, constantly evolving, and training our students. And as we're going to see, as we go through the next set of graphs, we're doing well. Because I believe we compare ourselves to ourselves again. Yeah, so this is all us. It's years 2022, 23, and 24, and all the different subject areas. It was English, right, at 100%. It's the maths, geometry, Algebra II. The dark red that you're seeing is the mastery level, that's 85% or higher of how many students are scoring that. So you can see consistently, as we go through all of these, our students are scoring at the mastery level what most schools are scoring at the passing level. So we're in the 80s and 90s of mastery, and that's a passing rate for a typical high school. In our languages, it's the FLACs exams, not the Regents' exams. And we see similar scores there. 100% the last two years in German, Italian 100% the last three years, 100% in Spanish in the past few years. So we're seeing very high results in every area. And those Regents' exams are 9th, 10th, 11th graders. So typically, your AP students that are taking multiple exams are your upperclassmen, and the Regents' exams are the lower classmen. So we're seeing every grade level at the high school, students are scoring very high. And overall analysis of the Regents' exams, again, across the board, we're at or close to 100% passing. So it's difficult to show growth year in and year out. It's tough to show that improvement. But like we started with our graduation rate at 99%, how do you improve? Just a little bit. So we do that with the Regents' exams as well. How do you improve? Very targeted, with precision, you do that. You look at the data, we look at the exams and the results very specifically and target what are the areas and what are the skills that our teachers need to work with our students on to do better the next year. Again, our mastery rates are high, and that's where we can show a greater improvement. And we continue to do that every year. Another statistic that is not publicized much, but it's the overall average of all exams from all of our students on the Regents'. And we have the highest average on Long Island at 88.4% this year. And that's not a one-off. That's every year since 2016, there's no school district that's had higher Regents' results than us. That's true. Proud of that. And again, overall analysis. So the ELA, the English Regents' Exam, which is taken in 11th grade, is the final overall indicator that every student is required to take before they graduate. After that exam, there are choices. Students don't have to take Regents' exams. They don't have to take AP exams. They're all by choice at that point. But this is the final requirement, and we're at 100% year in and year out. That is a culmination. That success of our students is not just about the high school staff. That is about every teacher and every administrator in our district at every grade level, starting in the primary schools, the elementary, the middle school. It's the building blocks of everything we do in every subject area. And that's why we use and have used the ELA Regents', right, for our AP PR score for everyone in the district because it's a culmination to show the success of everybody. And we're proud to do that. And we're proud to show that every single year, every student, special ed, special needs, top students, they're all scoring and passing on the Regents' exam. And we know that as students leave Garden City High School and go on to the college level, they're prepared there, not just because of the dual enrollment classes and the AP courses, but with literacy and the reading and writing that they come out of Garden City High School, and they tell us every year they come back that we are so much better off than students that are in their courses, in their other colleges. And they don't know how to write, and the other students don't, and our students do. And they tell us that, and they're proud to present it, and we're proud to report that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, before we move to the middle school, I'm sorry. Mr. Samuelson is going to be reporting on Regents' Exams and NWEA and state assessments. But for the Algebra I and Earth Science Regents, I just want to point out, since the majority of our students do sit for those Regents' exams, Mr. Samuelson is reporting on those too. However, there are students at the high school who take the Algebra I and Earth Science Regents, and their data is combined in one data set. Again, we've organized the slides by discipline after the Regents'. So you'll see the literacy slides with the ELA state assessment scores, followed by the NWEA for each grade. And then you'll see the same process go through with math. On the NWEA slides, you'll see reference to a RIT score. And just so that everyone here has an understanding of what the RIT score is, it is where each student is ready for instruction today. So that's where the RIT So that's where the RIT comes from. It's a measure of student growth and achievement. It's nationally normed. The most recent norm was done in 2020. And just to understand a little bit about the percentages, if a student is on grade level, they are averaging getting about 50% of the questions that they're presented with correct. And that would be highlighted under the average. So you'll see that there are low, low average, average, high average, high. The three top ones are the ones where you see that the kids are on grade level. As Dr. Sin has said earlier, we plan to work with a consultant to conduct a K6 literacy curriculum review. We are also taking intermediary steps to ensure that students' learning experiences allow them the opportunities to reach their potential. Finally, what you're going to see is that our, for each administration of the New York State ELA Math Assessment, you'll see Garden City data and region data listed. Just to define what region is, that is Nassau County. And that's not to suggest that our goal is to reach the same levels as Nassau County, but rather to kind of give some context on trends over time. You'll see the trends that are in the region, parallel some of the trends here. Some do not, but it does add context to each of the slides. Mr. Samuelson, if you...
I'm sorry.
Yes, oh, sorry.
One quick question for Mr. Stein-Gerlinger. Just out of curiosity, you seem to obviously know the data very well. What's your biggest surprise and biggest concern?
Good question. Biggest concern is maintaining. It's difficult to stay at this high level, and we can't let off the gas. That's the challenge. It's not easy to do that. And like I said, with changing exams and changing curriculums year after year, not starting from scratch, but you have to be up to date, and there's a lot of training that gets in it. The biggest surprise is that positively, we saw general improvement across the board in every subject area. The mastery level improved, which I didn't expect that. I thought maybe that would stay flat along with the high passing rates in general. So it was a surprise to me that we continued to slowly increase. It can't sustain itself. I said that last year, too. I said, just be prepared. We cannot sustain that level. And then we still did it a little bit. So I was surprised that we were. So next year, again, you know, if we, you know, usually it's up and down a little bit. This wasn't. This was a surprise that it didn't drop at all. I'll tell you, this year, we'll look at our classes with, you know, co-talk classes are large. We see a lot with the ninth-grade group, and I think we're going to see a steady amount that way. So we're going to look at supporting those students. At the higher levels, it's, you know, business as usual. I think with the younger students coming up, we might need more support there.
Thank you, Mr. Stein-Gerlinger, and thank you to the Board of Education and District Leadership for having us this evening. I know that I speak for all of my colleagues, and I assure you, we're very proud to provide the community with these insights into our students' outstanding achievements and to share some information about how we look to move forward. Evenings like this always put an important focus on not only where we've been successful, but also where our next steps are. So that said, I'd highlight that the broad goals of the middle school include providing access to a wide spectrum of activities that give them a taste of a lot of different curricula. Our students are learning how to be learners and learning about ourselves, how we can self-advocate, self-monitor, and attend to our goals. So before we get into the numbers, I'll open with a great deal of pride in our school's results this year. Certainly, there's always room for improvement, and we're taking a very close look at our outcomes in all of our areas. But we're also deeply proud of our students' achievements. And even though this year's success comes through that careful planning and thoughtful analysis of student cohort performance data and self-reflection, we know that the work never stops and that the reflection needs to continue, and we need to continue to make adjustments to make sure our students have the best experience that they can have. And I'll just say briefly, because I'm supposed to be brief. Brevity is with Mr. Hardigan. In all, we know that our successes couldn't take place without the expertise of our teachers and coordinators and the incredible diligence of our students and families without the leadership of this team and with the coordinators and our partners in PPS, who do an incredible job of supporting us, our students, by providing us great insights into the curriculum and a strong ability to analyze data. So I'll begin by talking about our FLACs and Regents exams. The first slide you'll see are the results of our FLACs exams. We continue to be very, very proud of the results of our FLACs A. This year, nearly all of our students scored 85 or above in all three of our World Language courses. And as we look to continue our work in World Language and push our students to achieve proficiency through actful techniques and philosophies and a drive to create learning environments that are engaging, interpersonal, rigorous, safe, we see that our students are rising to the challenge. Our language courses are taught nearly entirely in target language, and our students have demonstrated both an interest and ability in using that same language to communicate their ideas and understandings, and also a deep interest in the culture of the communities that speak those languages. The FLACs exam is the local region that assesses the two years of World Language students undertake in the middle level. We know that students are required to earn at least one credit of World Language and to pass these exams by scoring higher than 65 in order to graduate from high school in a few years. And so this is a critically important moment for our learners. For many of our middle school learners, this is the only exam that travels with them. And the obvious distinction between this one and the Algebra and Earth Science Regents that we'll talk about in a moment is that the FLACs exams are taken by nearly all students, except for those who are otherwise removed by other needs. And an important observation about these exams is that they not only push our students to show what they know, but the FLACs exam is truly a performance assessment. It shows the degree with which students can use the language to speak and to understand the target language, which is deeply challenging, particularly at this level. But as you can see in our data, our students continue to be very, very successful. And then moving on to Algebra and Earth Science, just pointing out that Algebra and Earth Science are typically high school classes that students at the middle level take when they demonstrate the ability and interest to accelerate. In 23, 24, we had over 50% of our students taking Algebra and Earth Science. And again, these are high school-level classes, and our students performed extraordinarily well. And by the way, this year, those numbers have climbed, and we're closer to 2/3 in Algebra and Earth Science. 139 students took Algebra last year, and 137 took Earth Science. And our students did very, very well, with 94% and 96% achieving mastery on these two assessments respectively. And that just means 85 or better. That has nothing to do with passing. All of our students were successful. Of course, we're very proud of these results. We view them in the proper context. The grades that students earn in these courses, on these exams, we carve out of their high school transcript, and we want them to understand and appreciate the gravity of that. We also want them to enjoy their middle school years so we know that the students are diligent and making balanced choices so they can be successful in the long term. And then on these next two slides, we'll provide updates on two very different brands of assessments. The 3 through 8 ELA and math assessments are intended to give students and teachers information regarding student level of preparedness for the upcoming year of learning, high school curriculum, graduation criteria. It's also important to note that parents are permitted to opt their students out of one or both of these assessments. And so our data only reflects those who choose to participate. This year, last year, pardon, we moved to full participation in the CBT, the Computer-Based Teaching Testing Model, for the 3 through 8 exams. The previous year, we had piloted the model in only one grade. And we know that the shift created challenges for our students that related more to the technology than it did the content. But due to the diligence and planning of our coordinators and teachers, and to speak to your question before, Mr. Silio, we had plenty of opportunities to practice the module, to become accustomed to the tools. And we found that the students were very successful there. This year was also the first year that we took the new New York State Science Assessment for our eighth-grade students. The makeup of that exam, both in style and content, is brand-new for all New York State students. And the feedback from our learners was that it was very difficult. And in fact, if you speak to leaders across New York State, they'll share the same, that this new assessment was much more challenging than we've seen in the past. Our own review of the assessment showed the test required a much deeper understanding of both the concepts and the reading and data skills, data interpretation skills, than we've seen in the past. So in the next slide, we have our science data. And you'll see in the results, the new assessment that our schools, our scores significantly outperformed the region. There's certainly room for improvement. But it's important to note that we don't really have anything to compare this to because it's a new assessment, and all of our results are really compared to themselves. But as you know, we did much better than the region. In the next slide, you'll look at our literacy, our ELA 3 through 8 assessments. And you're also going to see the NWEA assessment results. And it's important to note that there's a very big difference between the 3 through 8 assessment and the NWEA assessment. So again, the 3 through 8 assessments are New York State Achievement Tests. They focus on how high the student can reach, whereas the NWEA is a nationally-normed assessment that measures student growth. It's a significant difference. And the NWEA test is reactive to student performance, too, in that students climb as they successfully answer questions until they hit their upper maximum. We also know that students approach the NWEA as a no-stakes assessment, which is something to consider in the middle level. An important consideration, truly. So I'll show some closer thinking and some data analysis in a few moments. But first, just the broader data. As you can see here, 70% of our sixth-grade students, 71% of our seventh-grade students, and 78% of our eighth graders achieved a 3 or 4 on this year's ELA exam, in all cases showing a positive comparison to results in our region. You'll also see improvements in our NWEA results in sixth and seventh grade and a consistent level of performance in our eighth grade. Of course, we also need to maintain a focus on where we need to show our efforts and our pointed approach to standards. And as we've done every year, we've identified the following areas as priority focal points. And for us, it is Standards 2, 3, and 4 of the New York State ELA standards, key information, and author's craft. And that's where our work is with our learners. That's where our teachers are focusing their energy so that we can see improved results. With respect to mathematics, you can see that 88% of our sixth graders achieved a 3 or 4 in the exam, and astounding 94% of our seventh graders scored in that range, and 86% of our eighth graders scored in that area. And I'll highlight that with respect to the eighth graders, only students who do not take Algebra take the eighth-grade algebra math exam. So that result removes the students who are predisposed to mathematical success, who also did very well in the Regents. And you'll also note that our math NWEA scores show similar growth that we saw in ELA. As we did in ELA, we again dedicate ourselves to identifying priority standards and areas of need for growth based on our student performance. This year, we'll continue to highlight areas of priority interest and focus our energies there to ensure the same level of excellence. We also know that students will come into us in the elementary school having experienced more of the innovative math, and that we are using a lot of our time with our math teachers to help make sure there are no gaps. This year, areas for targeted growth would be algebraic reasoning, proportions, geometry, and constructive response. So in general, as we do every year, we think about our cohort results, and we're proud to share the high-performing results of our classified cohort, with more than 60% showing proficiency in mathematics. Our proficiency rate in ELA is lower, but as we indicated last year, it's important to keep in mind that for our classified students, the vast majority of them have identified needs in reading and speech and language areas that would manifest themselves more frequently on a reading exam than they would on a math assessment. And then, again, these are just summaries of the 6 through 8 assessments, and you'll see growth in math. You'll see some slight decline in ELA and a pretty standard consistency in eighth-grade mathematics. Again, as I was indicating before, the important factor of our work going forward is reviewing where our students are successful, maintaining that strength, and attacking those areas where we identify opportunities for growth. So in ELA, those areas are Standards 2, 3, and 4. And of course, writing. We see a lot of writing across the curriculum. In fact, the partnership between our ELA teachers and socialized teachers with using common language and common strategies for developing thoughtful, evidence-based responses is very, very strong, continues to grow. And in mathematics this year, focusing on those content areas, algebraic reasoning, proportions, geometry, and applications of presents and linear functions, and of course, constructive responses, which in many ways use the same strategies that we want to see in English. It's positing a position and defending it with evidence and logic. And again, making sure that all of our students at all levels are comfortable and ready to be successful using the computer-based testing format.
Thank you, Mr. Samuelson.
Thank you.
How can we integrate? Actually, I'm sorry. How can we involve more children, do you believe, into the Regents curriculum for eighth grade?
Well, as I shared earlier, we have seen an increase this year. So we have, we're up to 2/3 of our students who are taking the Regents-level classes, which is certainly the highest it's been since I've been here. And I think we want to be thoughtful about making sure that we're putting students in a position to be successful and making sure that we are giving students a chance also to take responsible risks and push themselves. So our motive, our methodology has been that we have a benchmark success rate that we want to see in sixth grade before we grant students access to it. But we also allow for a meaningful conversation with families when they feel like that grade doesn't necessarily reflect their student's level. And we've been able to be flexible and thoughtful, making sure we put our students where they want to be to achieve their goals. So again, 2/3 is a pretty high number. And I think we want to make sure that we're putting students in there who are safe and comfortable and ready to be successful, but also not putting unnecessary barriers before them taking responsible risks.
You mentioned concerns with Standard 2, 3, and 4. Just looking at the standards right now, how is it that we're utilizing the other contents, specifically Science and Social Studies, probably, well, not probably, the best areas to gain access to nonfiction? How are we utilizing Science and Social Studies to shore up ELA?
That's a great question. So, I mean, this is one of the benefits of working in a team system. Our teachers collaborate all the time. And in fact, both in sixth and seventh grade, we see a high frequency of interdisciplinary work. Just last week, I watched as our seventh graders performed and demonstrated their understanding of the Salem Rich Trials, which is a history content, but they were using it to, socialized content, which they were using to, in English class, to demonstrate their understanding of the nonfiction text they're reading And to be creative in how they demonstrated that understanding, they made projects as well as doing some, some writing. And certainly in eighth grade, we see that as well with the, with the Holocaust unit, where they do the, the cage aligning with the World War Two curriculum. And as, as I said before, with respect to the math, we certainly see our students looking to be scientific writers and develop thoughtful theories based on evidence and communicating those things in a way that the average reader can understand.
I apologize if this is, I guess, out of your purview, but I'm just looking at I have some concern with the NWEA versus the ELA state exam. I'm just curious how we compensate for that because if you're looking at the results from 2022 to 2024, there's actually a 26 point swing between at, in 2022 where 13 points higher. Just so you could know my rationale, I took the high, high average and average. And I basically said that that was a three and a four. So I compared that versus the threes and fours that we received in ELA. So just some fast math, you're looking at 89 to 76. So that's 13 points higher in, on the ELA state exam. And then when we move into 2024, it's actually where it, um, 70% threes and fours on the state exam and we're at 83% on NWEA. So I'm just curious how we deal with those inconsistencies.
It's a good question, and I guess I want to think about that a little bit. But one of the things that the New York State exam assesses that the NWA doesn't is constructive response. And that's an area where weaknesses can show up. And then the other thing I think is that as students get older, non, no stakes assessments tend to become more challenging to use as, as benchmarks. The, the NWEA assessment doesn't hold weight for our students. And while we try to push them to do their best and motivate them to put their best foot forward, we also understand that in the scope of the great number of academic challenges they have, uh, they may not approach that with the same level of care. They do all the things. I'm sorry. Enthusiasm.
So NWA does not have writing?
I'm sorry. The NWA assessment is not assessed writing.
If I could just add, the NWA is adaptive, meaning that it's individualized by student based on prior answers. So if you get one answer correct, then it's going to level up the difficulty. So sitting next to me might be, it's not going to be the same exam that the person next to me is going to be sitting with. So that may have an impact as well. Everybody gets the same assessment. I mean, of course there are field tested questions that might not be the same on everyone, but the vast majority of the assessments for New York State are the same.
Thank you. Certainly. Thank you.
I just had one more quick question. The slide that references the proficiency rate for students with disabilities in the area of ELA, that 30% proficiency. Do you have any suggestions for any additional supports that need to be in place so that we can do a better job closing that achievement gap for our students with disabilities, especially in that area of ELA?
I appreciate that question. I, I don't know that we need more supports. I think that we need to continue to improve our practice and to look carefully at our students, a small population. So we're talking about individuals here and about making sure that we understand their needs very carefully and that we're able to provide them bespoke experiences that speak to those needs. I think that's where the growth is for us, for, for our special education work. I don't know that it's a question of supports, but I appreciate that question.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Samuelson. Uh, as we move to the elementary portion of tonight's presentation, I just want to point out and add context to a few things regarding what you're going to see. The gains that were reported last year in math have been maintained. I point that out because we've had a high level focus on, in the elementary buildings to implement illustrative math as a primary resource over the last few years. That involved a substantial amount of professional development and planning. And while that was happening at the elementary schools, there was a focus on the foundations of literacy in our primary buildings where we have our K1 students. And as the student achievement report really speaks to the achievement of our students in grades three through eight, what you won't see on the screen is the growth of our students in the primary buildings in K and one. That will come to pass once those little kiddos get into the third grade and get the opportunity to sit for the New York State assessments. But for now, those, that focus, that area of focus has really been up until now in the primary buildings. And so Mrs. Hand and Mr. Hartigan, are you ready?
Yes. Thank you to the Board of Education and thank you to my fellow colleagues who helped put this presentation together. And again, Mrs. Samuelson, thank you for just some additional information about the NWA as it relates to New York State assessments. We see some of the similar trends at the elementary level with both of those. The first assessment that you'll see pictured here is our grade five science exam. As Mr. Samuelson explained, this was a very lengthy test in talking with several of our students. We had a hundred, uh, over a hundred students still testing after 200 minutes. It is the first time this assessment was administered and you know, it came out as 62% proficient across both, both buildings in grade five compared to the region at 48%. We attribute this to strong curriculum articulation, the assistance of Joanna Rogosich, who has helped us out with some staff development in these areas, and also our fifth grade team, who has just consistently prepared our students for this exam. We do hope that the, you know, of course the state will make some changes and some adjustments to this assessment. And talking to our elementary colleagues, uh, we, you know, there were students that demonstrated some, you know, emotional distress because of this exam. But we overall, uh, of course higher than the region, as Dr. Bowman explained before, that is not the barometer, but it is nice to know that, yeah, you know, we were significantly higher than the region in our science exam, which was also a reading exam.
I think, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, one of the things that's important is I said earlier, when there isn't another assessment to compare to, there will only be one assessment up. And while that's not only true for fifth grade science, it's true for fifth grade science because there wasn't a fifth grade state test in science prior to last year's administration. And once the administration took place, there was outcry across the state regarding the experiences of students being tested over the course of a number of hours. It was, it was, there was a similar experience in eighth grade, but predominantly in fifth grade because the kids hadn't really had an experience like that before. And as Chris said, it was a very reading heavy assessment with the balance of content not being as much as we had expected across the state. So.
At, at times it asked students to compare and contrast two very dense, uh, you know, pieces of science literature and then respond based on creating models over the computer. So it was a very intense type of test for our kids. And I just want to reiterate that again, over 150 students still testing after 200 minutes at 10 years old is, um, you know, it, it, that's tough. That's tough for our kids. So I do have to give a, you know, shout out to our fifth grade teachers for preparing that. And again, to Mrs. Rogosich for just helping us out with that staff development in the area of science. As we move across, you'll see the same graph. We'll pause here for a minute and then we'll go through the numbers. And I want to make sure we get to the summary slide as well. But the, what you'll see here is the numbers across is the proficiency levels up at the top. So New York State grade three ELA. The top bar there is 85% proficient from 2022. Then we, and 2024, 67% proficient. Of course, we, that was an area of focus for us and we're going to discuss plans to make sure that we are addressing the needs of those students. The NWA grade three, we, we spoke about already on that. Thank you, Dr. Bowman. So we, again, when this, the NWA is the most norm reference assessment that we have available in the country. It's sampled over a million times. So relatively speaking, from a general perspective, you do see the bands that are pretty evenly distributed with this. As Mr. Jen Echo asked, a great question, just about some inconsistencies between NWEA and the state assessment. If we use all three red areas as like a, you know, a three, four, we're still, we're seeing some of those inconsistencies. And we've got a plan to address some of those, which we'll talk about towards the end of our, our, our segment. The grade four assessment. You're looking at ELA. Up at the top, I'll draw your attention to the 77% proficiency levels in 2022. And again, uh, you know, and the 2024 68th percentile. And also analysis of the grade four NWA here as well. Just to draw your attention to the grade four NWA national norm, which is just under the title there. The national norm RIT is the 204. And we have been at the 212, 210 and 209 numbers. Keep in mind, two RIT points is minimal difference as the standard deviation is usually around 15. So you know, we're looking at minimal change in the NWA across several years. It's been a consistent barometer for us and it is always helpful because while we indicate the, the Garden City RIT there, it's when we use this for diagnostic purposes, we're comparing students to themselves in this. And this helps us develop a individual plan for these students. And it helps, again, just make sure that our supports are calibrated through the MTSS process.
Hey Chris, just a quick question. I'm sure you've told me this before and I forget, but are comparative districts using the NWA as well? Or is there another?
Some are and some aren't. It is, um, I'd have to say though, it is one of the two that are widely used across Long Island.
Okay. Thank you.
Here, uh, we've got grade five ELA. We are at, at the 2022 school year, we were at the 58th percentile and we have been on a steady increase in grade five for proficiency levels, starting at the 58 up to the 68th and then to the 73rd. This kind of calibrates and jives with the grade five science assessment and the grade five math as well. Very proud of our, all of our students and, and of course the consistent growth that our fifth grade students have demonstrated. The model that we have used and the blueprint we have used for this fifth grade increase, I'm going to get to in just a little bit. But we're hopeful that we will be able to use this model in some of the other areas in which we did not see the, uh, the anticipated growth that we had hoped for.
All righty, and just quickly going through the math slides before we get to our summary page. We start with the state assessment for the third grade in mathematics. It's important to note that third grade, this last year was the first year that they took the computer-based assessment. The year prior, both fourth and fifth grade did. So fourth and fifth grade have taken computer-based twice. Third grade last year was the first grade, first year they took the state assessments on the computer. We have our 2022 score of a 86% proficiency. And then in 2024, we have 87% proficiency there. When we look at the NWEA again, as Chris said, you'll see those even bars kind of going across for the NWEA there. The national norm is at a 201 and our most recent Garden City average RIT was a 208. When we look at fourth grade in two, in 2022, our proficiency rate was 83%. And in 2024, our proficiency rate is 90%. NWA math, again, you'll see those consistent bars going across. The national average for the RIT is a two, two 10. And in Garden City in 2024, our national, our average RIT was a 217. And fifth grade math assessment data in 2022, we are at 59% proficiency. And in 2024, we are at 82% proficiency. So as Chris explained, we've seen nice steady growth, growth across the board for fifth grade. And we plan to model some of our other grade level experiences in the same way that we've been working with our fifth grade teams.
Just when looking at the NWA for math, is there similar maybe gaps in that program versus kind of ELA and some of the things that Mr. Samuelson mentioned?
So I think anytime we're using the NWA, all of the things that Mr. Samuelson said are very true. Our students, you know, when they sit for the state assessment, it's a little bit of a different feeling for them. They go in with this sense of, I need to, you know, do everything I can to make sure that I'm meeting expectations on this. So NWA, sometimes you get inconsistencies in that place. It's important, that's why we use multiple measures whenever we're looking at student data. So NWA is going to be one piece of it, whether we're talking about ELA or math. And then there's a lot of different other assessments that we'll use to try to triangulate and make sense of that data a little bit. Make sure that that data is telling us a true picture. When we look at NWA data, very often we'll also look at the time it took a student to take the assessment because it gives us that down to the minute, how long it took. We'll also look at rapid guessing because it will tell us the percentage of rapid guessing that a student maybe just click, click, clicked through a couple of questions because that can be very telling for us. And when we, if we see indicators in the timing or the rapid guessing that kind of make us wonder about the assessment data, then there's some follow-up assessments that maybe we would do, or we would look at different classroom assessments to kind of confirm what we're seeing.
So maybe in, in short, you think the NWA is probably a little bit better in some ways than on the math than it is in, in ELA?
On the math, it's definitely more comprehensive because on, in the ELA, we're missing that whole writing component.
Thank you.
Okay. So again, we have our slide here, similar to the middle school for our proficiency rates for special education. And again, it's going to be the same story as Mr. Samuelson said. We do recognize that we have 31% of our students who are classified, who are receiving a level one. Those 30, 31% of students have identified reading needs on their IEP that are being addressed through Resource Room for Reading or Resource Room programs, or even the ICT or the 12, 1212 programs. Okay.
All right. So while we get into the analysis, I think it's important to take a look at the summary slide for all of the assessments across the board from grades three, four and five, both in ELA and math. Those are on display for you here. While we've gone through this, it's important that we just highlight some of the strengths. Because if we, we've recognized that if you, you know, if you work hard at the things that they already do well at, it'll have a ripple effect on some other areas. So when we reviewed the New York State ELA assessment with Mrs. Kaufman and our teachers, a common strength across all grades was in standard eight. Standard eight focuses heavily on evaluating evidence. It's a nuanced standard because it asks the students to have a, to, to develop their own strong understanding of why authors are using reasoning, not to create their own reasoning, but why the author is doing and saying these particular things. Across all grade levels, our teachers have shared with us through their individual teacher reports that they, our students are becoming really critical thinkers. The, the standards within each grade that are some strengths, and I'll go through these. In standard three, there were strengths in determining the meaning of words, phrases and figurative language, which was standard four. 83% of our students received full credit for questions that asked students related to this question. In grade four, there were, in grade four, there were strengths in describing character settings, events and drawing specific details. Standard three, that was 70% of our students received full credit for questions that asked, uh, that asked students related to this standard. Keep in mind that is of the released questions, that is not all of them. And in grade five, there were strengths, uh, pretty much everywhere. But in, in determining the theme and how is, how is it, how, excuse me, how it is supported by key details. About 85% of our students received full credit for questions that asked students, questions related to this standard. We did this analysis through Mrs. Kaufman and our teacher teams to professional development. The grade five, from a general perspective, we've demonstrated an increase overall proficiency from 2022 to 2024. We started at the 58th percentile and we went to the 73rd proficiency. While there is always still more room to grow in those areas, we attribute the consistent growth with the following four actions. A significant increase in student expectations. We have gone through an analysis of extracurricular events and made some really strategic changes without compromising what we value and making sure we're increasing the instructional time. We focused test preparation by incorporating practice assessments embedded into the units. We've also done an analysis of exemplar student work samples through professional development sessions. And of course, our fifth graders have the increased exposure to online testing because they have been doing it from, you know, for a few years at this point. And also have been manipulating the NWA for quite some time, even as our fifth graders and our youngest learners are doing that. So those are some of the strengths of the ELA. We're going to go into the strengths of the math and then, and then come back to some areas that we want to grow in and the plan for those.
Okay. When we reviewed the New York State Math Assessment Data with our teachers, a common strength in measurement and data was identified in all grade levels. Grade three in particular with time, grade four in angles, both measuring and drawing and grade, uh, grade four angles. And grade five was in volume. In all of those areas, students scored within 90% or above on those questions. Other strengths were identified on each grade level. In grade three, there were strengths in multiplication and division word problems, as well as identifying addition and multiplication patterns. Grade four strengths included decomposing angle measurements and solving equations to find the missing parts, as well as multiplication. Grade five students showed a strength in using multiple strategies such as place value, drawing models, math properties and the relationship between different operations to add, subtract, multiply and divide decimals. All of the strengths that we have identified in mathematics can be attributed to a strong professional development and data analysis that our teachers participated in last school year. Mrs. Cardella and her team of math coaches led PED that was grounded in student data. Each session had teachers reviewing data on Linkit and using that data to identify student strengths and areas for additional instruction. Teachers worked with coaches to identify strategies and create resources that would support the most challenging topics within each unit. Fluency and classroom assessments were consistently analyzed during grade level collaboration time to make plans for small group instruction work.
Yes, and I'm sorry, the, the standards that you're mentioning, which were very strong. Is that something that you've seen in math? Is that something? Is that something that you've seen over the years or is this something new or?
So some are consistent, some are new. Measurement and data has not always been a consistent across the board strength. Measurement and data sometimes shows one of our opportunities for growth in there because of some of the really challenging areas that can be found in there with area and perimeter. Volume was actually one area that was a big opportunity for growth for us in fifth grade. And we identified that and kind of made shifts in the scope and sequence to be, be able to address it sooner and then be able to reinforce it throughout the school year, which really was helpful for our students.
Thank you.
Okay, so now on to opportunities for growth. When we analyze assessment data with our teachers, we always look to identify opportunities for growth. Chris and I are going to share some of these areas with you now in both ELA and math, and then we'll go deeper into the plans that we're going to use to support this work. So when we looked at our ELA data, we have determined that an opportunity for growth for all grade levels continues to be in the area of constructed and extended responses. Response to reading is a very specific genre of writing that needs to be explicitly taught to our students. Our goal this year will be providing students with skills and strategies that can be utilized to ensure that they are answering questions completely, using claims and appropriate evidence. In grades four and five, we will focus our efforts on how to expand our work with a clear strategy. That's really how we get students to focus on writing a claim, having evidence, another piece of evidence and reasoning into their extended writing responses. In addition, we will focus on the core standards as Matthew shared before, standards two, three, and four, because data currently shows inconsistent performance in these areas. A deeper understanding of these standards will, which include finding central idea, theme, summarizing, character analysis, and interpreting words and phrases and texts will enable our students to think critically about texts, both literary and informational that they're presented with.
Maybe just on, on the ELA areas for improvement, is this coming off of classroom data, is it coming off of state exams, a combination of both?
So this is primarily from our state assessment data, but that being said, anytime we see something in the state assessment data, we look at our classroom assessment data to see if we're finding inconsistencies or inconsistencies and where we can kind of fill in those pieces. So we never just use one piece of data.
Is the state asking enough questions on a specific thing?
No, and it's different every year. So one, it's hard to even compare how we do on standard two from one year to the next year, because one year there may be three questions and the next year there's eight questions. So it's, it's challenging.
Do you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you first.
Do you, rather than, I mean, specifically with ELA, I know that the standards are a little gray at times. Do we break down the standards to really look at what skills are being asked, like main idea, drawing conclusions, academic language, like that?
Absolutely. We never just stop at the standard level because there's so much to unpack in one standard, especially as the grade levels increase. Once you get to fifth grade, those standards can contain a lot in one. So we really break apart question stems and what's involved in each individual question to really see where the breakdown in the specific standard lies.
And maybe just one last question. What's the, I guess, from a percentage basis, how much is constructive, is constructive and extended responses on these state exams? Is it a big portion, a small portion? How do you, how do you guys think about that?
So it's definitely a smaller portion than the multiple choice. There is about four or five questions on the entire assessment that are constructed responses. And in fourth and fifth grade, one extended response question.
Thank you.
Can we share this, this slide basically, this, this is where the, yeah, the parents overall, I mean, obviously things come home where we want some clear responses. Sometimes as a parent, I think a company, you know, sometimes we know, we get the homework, but it's like, okay, clear, that's like, we send these home, I know individually probably to the parents and see where we run into them.
Yeah, we, we definitely try to, we have parent, we have teachers write about these ideas in their weekly newsletters that go out. We share like clear, last year we did P T A presentations about it and we sent our parents home with clear kind of resources and anchor charts that they could keep at home to help their kiddos. We also use the family math and literacy nights to be able to share a lot of this information with parents as well. But a lot of it directly comes from the classroom teachers, specifically in their newsletters.
And then before I go into the opportunities for growth, but Mr. O'Donohue, after the student achievement report is finished, we tried to direct our P T A to direct parents to this as well. And we put it out in our, our monthlies, we're going to be doing that in our next monthly to, to reference this because there's, like you said, there's important data points on this and there's some good planning here. So we want to make sure it reaches everybody. The, the opportunities for growth for math. So just to kind of calibrate a second before we get into that, what you're, what you're still looking at is the New York State, from a slides perspective, a New York State grade three through five assessment analysis. We've touched on these, we're going to get to more of that in just a moment after we talk about the opportunities for growth for math. With the opportunities for growth in math, you saw the, you know, high eightieth, the mid eightieth to high eightieth percentile proficient, excuse me, percent proficient. So these areas for opportunities for growth for math are, are very granular. So keep that in mind. This is, we came under the, the analysis of the same passion with Mrs. Cardella and our teacher teams through staff developments. And in grade three, we want to continue our work in comparing fractions. I think that is always regardless of where this, the proficiency levels point in comparing fractions for third grade is such a critical part of the, you know, the instruction in third. So we want to make sure we always spend, you know, a fair amount of time and making sure our students have a good understanding of comparing fractions. This way they, when they get to, to Matt and to Kevin, you know, they know how to do all, you know, math that they need to get the platinum award. You know, it starts with us, just another, just letting you know that again. It starts with actually our primaries across the way they, but in, in grade four, and then actually really our parents should start with, but um, so in, in grade four, our goal is to strengthen finding whole number quotients and remainders with four digit dividends. So that's our, our long division, right? And our division in grade four, we'll always want to have a focus in on that, even if our proficient levels are high on that, we're, we're not going to never, never lose sight because we recognize that that is a such a strong foundational and prerequisite skill for future success in there. Parents, if you're listening, this is a plug for math facts. And in grade five, we're also drawing our attention to solving real world problems involving multiplication, fractions, and mixed numbers. All right, so now to take you through the plan for this. So the first bullet that you hear is the close reading and response to reading plans. So this slide in general indicates some takeaways from the data and some immediate next steps for us. As Carrie shared with you earlier, we recognize that we have demonstrated some inconsistencies within ELA standards two, three, and four, sometimes for a grade there are strengths and sometimes there are a need for a different grade. These standards grouped together make up about 60% of the exam. Okay. It has been clear to us through the data that our students need a heavy focus on response to literature writing. We did not get the writing results for the constructed response that we had hoped, but we have a plan to address those. We have been in discussions with the board about our, using our new data management system, Linkit, in ways in which we can level up our expectations for students. And that means, you know, assigning some, some sample tests and sample test questions through that management system. We've been able to take some of the data through Linkit and compare it with local assessments in a very visual appealing fashion, both simple to digest for our teachers to make some actionable next steps. So for ELA, we plan to administer a practice assessment through Linkit to compare it with those other data points. Teachers at this point have identified the key standards that they want to focus in on, on their classes. Our elementary administration team, along with Dr. Bowman and Mrs. Kaufman, have met to discuss the implementation of a closed reading and a response to reading instructional periods. This will include curation of complex texts, similar to the state exam, purposeful rereading, text dependent questions, annotation, and finally what Carrie had talked about, written response to reading. At times, it may also include some higher expectations for homework for our students. Carrie previously explains that our work within the, within the district and the, the district wide acronym for CLEAR as response to literature. We're going to talk, we're going to continue to talk about that as we hone that skill for our, for our students. This blueprint that I just shared with you to increase these expectations for our students has been successful already in fifth, and we look to continue to expand it in grades three and four. Recognizing that this work has to go hand in hand, no pun intended there, Mrs. Hand, with preparing students to successfully navigate, navigate computer based testing. So that plan, it, it doesn't, it won't work unless we make sure that our kids are adequately prepared for computer based testing. So that was part one, and then part two will be shared with Carrie on that.
Okay, I'm going to kind of share the next parts of the ELA plan all integrated together because they all support the opportunity that we have identified to strengthen our students' writing responses to both constructed and extended response questions. We'll continue to focus on the clear response strategy with our students. When students engage in this strategy, they're reminded that they need a claim, two pieces of evidence and reasoning in order to completely answer a question. We have noticed significant improvement in students' written responses when they use the clear strategy on paper and pencil tasks. On paper, you often see evidence of students checking their work. They may be highlighting in different colors or making their own checkboxes to make sure they've done each part of CLEAR. Students at this point are not using the strategy as consistently or completely as we'd like to see them use it when they're tasked with answering a question on the computer. The act of typing can be laborious in and of itself for our students, which at times has our students finding ways to condense their responses to limit the amount of typing that needs to be done. This often leads to pieces of the answer being omitted and the students only receiving partial credit. Our classroom teachers and technology teacher will be engaging in specific computer based clear strategy practice with our students to enhance their responses. For example, when we practice the clear response on pen and paper, we often color code our responses. Teachers will model this strategy on anchor charts in their classroom and students can be found using this strategy to check their work when they finish their writing. This year, we will ensure that teachers model responses on the computer using tools to highlight different parts and different colors to show a transfer of the strategy to the students. Students will be encouraged to mark up their responses in a similar way when practicing. While this cannot be completely replicated on the day of the state assessment, there's only one highlight color, it will reinforce the usage of the clear strategy when typing your responses. In addition, now that our teachers and students are familiar with the C B T platform basics, we'll explore more of the tools that are accessible to students that can help them when they're constructing their responses. For example, they can be copying and pasting evidence from the text so they don't feel the need to shorten their answers when they're typing. We'll continue to utilize the clear strategy across all content areas to provide additional practice in various genres. Okay, when we move into math, you'll see constructed responses comes up first. So it kind of goes hand in hand with what we were just saying. We've also identified constructed responses in math as an opportunity for growth. The work that we'll do in this area is consistent with clear strategy work we'll be engaging in. But a large component of this work when it comes to math is how to transfer your mathematical thinking onto the computer. Utilizing Linkit practice questions as well as the C B T platform, we will provide our students with opportunities to show their work on the computer to ensure that they are transferring all of the important pieces solved on paper to the screen. Last year, we really focused on becoming familiar with the platform itself. For example, how to use writing tools, how to access the measurement tools that are provided to answer some of the questions. This year, we'll focus more on how to ensure the students are capturing the essential components of their thinking when showing their work and explaining their answers.
Look, I have a question, just when looking at the data, and I know we've talked about this in other meetings, you know, with the increase or, I don't know the exact numbers of students with special needs and identification has been, been an issue that communities brought up and we've spent a fair time talking about, you know, you probably don't have an answer to this, but how does this play into the numbers and the impact? You know, if I want to look at apples and oranges, when you look at numbers, I know we talked about our special needs students and some of the proficiency numbers, it'd be great to kind of see if there's a way to, to maybe dive deeper into these numbers and segregate them a little bit more and talk about them, you know, in the future with the administration, the board about if we're seeing any patterns there, maybe we're not identifying people, or maybe there's a certain subset of students who are, you know, fall into those categories that need, you know, extra support. And that's why we're seeing maybe underperformance in some of the numbers that we haven't seen in the past.
Yeah, that's definitely something that we continuously do. We look at our data, especially when the benchmarking times come up. We look at each individual student's data. I think it's also important to note that one of the main things that we're looking at with our students, our classified students is how are we transferring the skills that they're working on in resource room for reading, let's say, into the general ed classroom when they're working on some of this work? Because it is completely different at that point for them. So how are we getting them to use the strategies when they're in the general education classroom? And we do a lot of that now. We have our resource room teachers push into the classroom at times so that they can be supporting the student and reminding the student sometimes, hey, remember how we do this in our, in my class? But also then providing support for the classroom teacher and can give some kind of tools and resources right on the spot of, hey, when I'm doing this in my class, this is what we use and kind of model how that looks like in their classroom. Because that transfer piece is where it becomes challenging.
Maybe just one follow on to that. I know we look at the numbers by year, but obviously we don't look at the previous years and some of this, some of this data is there, things we should think about at the primary level that maybe we can do to, I don't know if it's identification, it's different systems. And it's probably not for this conversation, but I think that's something we should look into because we started grade three and we're looking at data, but obviously there's a, there's three years of buildup to that.
I think, I think Chris or Carrie were saying that at the primary level, they have been focusing a lot on the writing, especially last year, this year, and, and that came from our data. So, and that's a goal in terms of, you know, what we see in third grade, that we share that with our primary colleagues.
I know that we're comparing, it's not even comparing apples to oranges, it's like comparing apples to automobiles. But over the span of 22 to 24 in third grade, the drop 19 points in proficiency left. So I, I think that really looking, I'm sorry, in ELA, so really looking to the primaries to see what they could do to kind of help us shore that up, I think is a pretty strong approach. A side question about math, they're still against scrap paper in the C B, C B T, right?
They can use scrap paper, but the scrap paper is never going to be looked at. And so like we said, we wish that the students could take a picture with their Chromebook of their scrap paper and upload it. And it's something every time the state gives us, what would you suggest for next year? How can we, we suggest it every time? Because there's a lot of times students have step by step, every bit of their thinking on there, and then it's just too hard to get it all on the computer. It's tough when it comes to math.
The technology is there. Photo, photo math, that app, you can take a picture of your examples that you can write and it will work it out for you.
There are so many apps and programs that we use that let them do that. It would be such an advantage to our children if that was an option for them.
And Chris, I know you mentioned Linkit. I know that was something that the board and the administration was focused on getting a, a data system that was, you know, something that we could use over the course of time. So we, you know, we wouldn't have to worry about the transfer of a student from one to the other. You could see kind of strengths and weaknesses and work on that. Can you just give a 30 second overview of, you know, what you've done with that system, whether the administration, not the administration, but the teachers are embracing it? What do you think can really be driven from that tool to help us in this process?
Yes, of course. The teachers have taken to Linkit because of a very strategic rollout from the entire administration team. It's been really important that we show the benefits of the program rather than just say, this is how we're going to collect data. So in our one to ones with teachers, whether it's a, you know, through the observation process or staff development, we have taken a look at data profiles that they have never seen before. So what you mean, you can create a dashboard for a particular grade level and you can upload their previous two state assessments, their N W E A, and their running records and local assessments, and you can see it visually. And you can see it visually color-coded in every domain. And then within that, you can click into a subgroup of students, and it will show you number one, discrepant data. Like, for an example, if a student is in the high average range for the NWA but scored a level two in the state assessment, it allows you to dig a little deeper to figure out what might be, you know, the cause of that. And while we've always been a, you know, we're building this culture of data, this has been at our fingertips to make it so simple for our administrative team to create these dashboards. And then when you create the entire master grade list, you can share it with the teachers, and they only have access to their students. And then we have developed fluency plans for math facts through Linkit. We have developed, and we were just talking about this recently, about pushing out some state assessment practice questions through Linkit as well, which will be data that is supportive and maybe perhaps indicative of how they'll do on state assessment. So, long story short, with data, you know, with Linkit, it's been a really intuitive way for a district and for our teachers to be able to do it. And I'll share a quick story, quit. But a teacher's roster was down, and she couldn't access her report cards. And she was coming to me, she was like, you know, I was like, all right, I'll get, I'll get it up and running. And she was like, no, I need Linkit for the, for the, for the report cards. And it was, I didn't, I didn't imagine we would be in year two and a teacher being so dependent on the dashboard to create the report cards. So it just goes to show me that I think we're in the sweet spot for it because of the very strategic rollout from everybody at the table here, making sure that it wasn't just another thing for teachers, but it was a really valuable tool that they could see it in a way visually they had never seen it before.
And I know I asked this question when we spoke in the past, but are teachers able to look at it and you can look across your cohort of teachers and see, some teachers do certain things better than others and vice versa? And how you use that tool to assess maybe professional development or teacher learning amongst themselves to figure out how to kind of address certain topics that maybe their students aren't doing as well, that other, the other teachers are doing better at?
Yeah, you can certainly do that. And with the help of the coordinators, they've been able to take a look at some of that data. And then, you know, best practice is the teacher next door sometimes. And making sure that you not just visit them because you think that they're good, but you visit them for a particular reason because the data shows that. And when you have got three years of trend of demonstrating some proficiency in a standard based on Linkit, it, teachers are happy to share what they're doing in those particular standards. Some of a teacher's staff development component, it's working really well. I do want to share with you, though, I think we can continue to do more on the teacher staff development front. But also recognizing we're in the second year of this. And, you know, as Dr. Sannat shared in previous meetings, we are far ahead of where I thought we would be with the help of Lauren McGuire and our team, making sure that, you know, Linkit has been successful for our, for our teachers. I'm going to just round out, unless there's other questions for it, yeah. I just want to round out, and we're like at that last bullet on math, and I just want to make sure I get there. So just to close out here for the elementaries, in collaboration with Mrs. Cardella and our math team, we've been monitoring the math fluency data. And teachers just recently had an opportunity to meet with their building level specialist for individualized fluency plans. They are through Linkit, and it's been wildly helpful. If there's anyone listening, and if there are any parents listening, please practice your math facts. You know, and the last component to, did I say practice your math facts? I did, okay, I just want to make sure I got that in there. Additionally, we're always making ways to adjust the pacing and incorporating significant review. I think what we saw, the increase in math proficiency levels was because Mrs. Cardella and the math specialist teams have strategically put in spiral review, both not into the instruction, but also the assessment. And that has been very helpful to see how those kids are doing. And the spiral review isn't just the unit prior. The spiral review is connected to the major clusters on the state assessments. So that's been big, and we'll continue to do that as we move forward with the help of Mrs. Cardell and the rest of our math teachers. And that is it for now for the math, excuse me, for the elementaries.
I just have one more question. I just had a question. It sounds like we're being very thoughtful and strategic about creating some more close reading experiences. But how do we do that in a way that doesn't become test prep? Like, are there ways in which we can provide those experiences but embed them inside our curriculum units to provide those experiences for the children, looking closely at different types of texts, giving them opportunities to write about those different texts, but not where you're doing it for the purpose of, you know what I mean? Where it becomes test prep? Because sometimes you can lose like engagement and motivation from children when it's like, you know, to prepare for a test.
Yes, that's a great point that you raise. You don't want to over-rotate on just close response engagement because then it may, you know, it may turn kids off to their chapter books that they really enjoy. And if you do it, let's say, the close reading is not just a test-taking strategy. You read, you close read three times, right? For a first read, a second read, and a third read. And you can select a variety of texts to do that. And I think it's up to our teachers who have done an excellent job of making sure they select those texts that are interesting to kids. So if they're interested in a topic, there are so many resources that could populate texts now, and there are so many available resources in our new libraries that if you really know your students inside and out, you can do a close reading strategy with the text and create those text-dependent questions without having it to feel too test-prepity. I also do think that when you go through close reading and you've responded to literature practices, you're teaching kids to be really critical of the work that's in front of them. And I think that's the idea, is that you want to turn kids into critical thinkers of the work. They want to make their judgments on what they're reading. That's really, really, really important. So it's a balance. It's not going to be an everyday experience. That's not what we hope for, but it will be a balance embedded into the units, both on the front end and the back end. And then, of course, leading up to the assessment, like, you know.
And then communicate with us if there's more resources or support that you need so that you can provide those texts for the children in the classrooms. We would love to be able to support that work as well.
That's great. And one, another area, so it doesn't feel so test passage, text kind of prep. We can use the text sets that the coordinators have helped us curate for science and social studies, for especially our fourth and fifth grade classes. So they're very aligned to our science and social studies curriculum. But then we can create the close reading experiences to go along with those text sets. So you're reading science and social studies based on your curriculum work, but doing some of that additional close reading experience in there.
And that's embedded in some of the mystery science, right? Inside of the units, they have text connections?
And I know I posed the question to you, Chris, but I have all the primary teachers here, principals, I'm sorry, here. Is there anything you're seeing amongst your student populations that is something that either the, you know, the board or the administration is unaware of? Or any patterns that you're seeing positive or negative that you think kind of impact scores as the, as the children get older?
Yes. We analyze our data and work, you know, at data meetings together and are very grateful for our work with our coordinators as well. So you mentioned the writing before. Last year, we did a great deal of work with our teachers in writing. We're thankful to our literacy director. We worked on the writing mini lessons, and we really increased our volume of writing. And this year, we're looking at reading and writing as reciprocal processes. We're building, we're building the foundation with phonics, using Hegarty Foundations for phonemic awareness. So as the children are decoding in their reading, they're encoding in their writing, the teachers are adding sentence, sentences, sentence dictations daily even more so. And then with that volume of writing, as we continue to work together, the goal is for the writing to increase. We looked at writing in teams of teachers. We looked at the writing progressions so that, that the gauge of a writer can be consistent across the years.
And I think, just to add on to that, I know you were talking about the primary levels, and Mr. Steingruber said it starts with us. And although we don't have the state assessments at our level, we do work very closely with the elementary. I mean, they do a great job with their data analysis and the state assessments. So we work with them knowing, so what we can do to help, you know, close those gaps as well with the elementary.
Are you, are you seeing any kind of themes and changes in our students? I know some of you have been with us for a long time, so you have good purview, some not as long. But in terms of what the students, what the students, you know, the preparation, the student subset, the mix, you know, where they stand when they come into us, are there more challenges? Or it's consistent over the years? Anything that you can share with folks that is of note?
I think we want to talk post-pandemic. So we have seen a trend change for our kids post-pandemic. And now we're feeling like we're back to a normal group of cohort of children that have had school experiences and life experiences. So we've seen that. I think the other thing, I just want to comment to the board about supporting us with a coach. And so we saw huge impact of our math coaches in both elementary and primary. And now we have one literacy coach, which we hope will be another added asset and benefit to both the Q5 level. So, I mean, in terms of seeing, it's hard to say if you see trends in K-1 because they're always evolving. They're, they're babies, they're sponges. So we, I, all I can say is I see them learning and growing every day. So there's not a day I don't see a child learning something. So it's hard to say, like, we've got a gap there necessarily per se. Are there places to grow always, right? Because education is always evolving, and we're always learning and recognizing where we could do better in first grade as a result of our secondary grade feedback from our elementary principals. So.
One area that maybe you can speak to is particularly with the support of, with the speech and language. Because that's been a big support for, I think, the primary with Ruby.
All right. So it hasn't been that long, but we are very, we are very fortunate that we had Ruby. We've had, we did, we did. We have a speech teacher to support our primary teachers in Hegarty. And specifically, she pushes into the kindergarten classrooms as a tier-one support with Hegarty to help those students gain that phonemic awareness. And she works in centers with the kindergarten teachers. And recently, she is working in conjunction with our math coach in building that center time with the classroom teachers so that children can get what they need at a specific time of day, whether it's working with the speech teacher on Hegarty, the math coach, and then the classroom teacher will also have center time so that children are all gaining access to whatever they need during that specific time. And she really honed in on those, and she really has built capacity with our teachers and staff as well in building phonemic awareness instruction.
Any other questions from the board? No? So we'll open it up to Susan's questions, comments on the presentation. If you could just, you can hear plenty of time, so you know the drill.
My name is Erin Debridge, 90 Huntington Road. First of all, thank you for the very thorough presentation. It is very much appreciated. I have two questions. One, and I'll just ask them and go sit down. One was just in regard to achievement data for special education students at the high school level. Was there a breakdown of students with IAPs and their achievements? And then secondly, looking further into special education students and looking at the collective achievement data. And that was presented as standardized data assessments. But is there anything about alternative assessment students? Is that, that's achievement also? But with both of these analyses and the data, what does it show us about special education students' strengths and weaknesses? If we're analyzing all of our students and all of our learners, kind of to echo what Mr. Silio said, can we dig deeper into the special education students in our district? And what does it tell us about the strengths and weaknesses of our instruction to special education students? So those are my questions.
All right, the high school numbers did not break down or separate the special ed students. They were included in there, but we do have that information specifically for special ed. We can provide that for you.
Also get the alternate assessment.
Just as a side note, Kristin and I were actually discussing what we thought was going on basically with special education as compared, because obviously ELA is lower than math. Personally, I think it's, it has something to do with the fact of, I am a math person. I just find sometimes it's more appealing. You're not going to get that same level of academic frustration that you're not having, that you have with ELA as the, as the, as the text gets harder. So I think to that point, I think that that's something that we should really look to embrace.
The data that was presented for the middle school and the elementary, the special ed data was included within that also. You separated, but I just, that was part of that as well.
Angela Muto, 117 Kingsbury Road. I look around the room, and I think I may be one of the oldest people in the room. And because of that, I'm not, oh, okay. We're in competition.
Rarely see that.
Then I hope I have support on my quick history lesson. I want to remind people that may not have been in this field, in the field of education at the time of No Child Left Behind. This was a political push that led to the Common Core standards, which I thought was a fabulous idea of coming up with who should learn what when. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that concept. I think that's brilliant, and we absolutely needed that. The problem came shortly thereafter when New York State and the entire nation was forced to create standardized testing. That was very challenging to students. The entire nation failed the test. That's okay, that's what happened. When the entire nation failed the test, publishing companies took over. And Pearson Publishers got the contract for New York State. And students did horrifically on the Pearson's first test. So Pearson said, we got a great idea. We're going to sell you test prep material. And they sold test prep material for one year. Students got workbooks that they could write in, and then they would be tossed out. And the reason this happened was because the following year, they were changing the test. And every, every year thereafter, they continued to change the test. Since then, none of the students in my family, not my own children and not my grandchildren, have taken the test. I opt out of the test all the time because they are not fair. No disrespect whatsoever to Mr. Steingruber. But the reason that the high schools do so well and the other schools, K, I mean, three through eight, do not do as well is because they are taking Regents tests. A Regents test has a Regents curriculum with a Regents test that teaches exactly what's going to be on the test. And then the students that listen and prepare and do, do well. Whereas with the New York State test, there's always a surprise. And I think we spend time, days, two hours tonight, and lots of aggravation trying to figure out what they're going to do next to make more money and keep themselves in business. And unless somebody actually says this, I'm happy to say it, and I'll repeat it, we absolutely need to focus on in-house looking at student work. I keep repeating it. I've been coming to these meetings for eight years, and I keep saying, let's use teacher-created data, teacher-created tests, because the teachers are teaching. The students are learning. We're sending our best students into these schools. We have a very, very, very supportive parent community. And everyone's doing a lot of things right. And this looks horrible. And the reason it looks horrible is because it's keeping somebody in business. It's in a multimillion-dollar business. I just had to do that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Hey, everybody, it's Rich Correio, Meadbrook Road. Two items, first, hopefully quickly. Dr. Seehan, I believe the last time that I addressed the board, there was the issue of creating a contractual bargaining unit for OT, PT staff. I believe at that time you had said around December. So I just was hoping for any follow-up on that item.
We'll be reporting on that at the next regular session, at the regular meeting. This is a work session. We'll be addressing that.
Is that, that's?
Next week.
Next week. Okay, thank you. The other, the other thing, sort of in a somewhat different direction, but I heard a lot tonight about, you know, three through five. We didn't talk so much about K through two. A lot of talk about data. A lot of talk about data testing. But in my view, I believe the, the child find system, the system designed to find the students that are having issues in those critical early years, K through two. I think it's broken. I'm happy to be told I'm wrong. I'm happy to have that conversation with any one of you. It's been difficult to have that conversation with any one of you. But I think it's broken. I'm happy to be proven wrong. Trust me. I have to respectfully disagree with Mr. Samuelson when we look at the numbers and differential between math and reading performance at the middle school level. The question was posed, well, do you think it's a matter of support? I have to disagree. I think it is a matter of added support at the right time, in the right way, and tailored to the student. We get lost in these numbers. We're not, you know, necessarily focusing on particular students. I get that. This is Board of Ed meeting. But it is, in my view at least, a matter of the right kind of support for that student. And, you know, a lot of times what does happen, and this dovetails with one of the concerns that I've had. A lot of the times what happened is, you know, parents will hear that type of response for their particular student. And one of the avenues, as you know, that they have as parents under the law is to ask for an independent assessment of the situation. And, you know, I'm looking at an email from Mr. O'Donoghue from March of 2023. The district had implemented a policy and procedure whereby parents asking for an independent assessment were being directed to a multiple, multidisciplinary team of educators to discuss the request. In my view, this is illegal. This is an illegal policy. It's my view. I'm happy to be told I'm wrong. I'm happy to have that conversation. My question to you is, and it's quite clearly expressed in detail in this email, and there's a chart. Is this policy still in place? What's that? It's an email from Mr. O'Donoghue.
I know you're a lawyer. I can't comment on legality in a public session without my counsel.
I'm not asking about legality. I'm asking, is this, is this policy in this email, which I'm happy to hand out to you?
I would love to take a copy, but I can't. I don't know the policies off the top of my head. But if you, if you have concerns about legality, you should put it in an email and send it and we'll have counsel review that.
Well, I, I've sent emails to the board and I've been ignored. This is a new IE process implemented 2023, 2023 school year.
Let you make statements like that. That's not true.
Excuse me?
It's, you're not ignored. All, all emails sent to the board will be responded to by the administration. The board doesn't directly respond to your emails.
Sir, I reached out directly about this IE issue. And I was ignored by yourself, by the board, by Dr. Seehan. Now I'm here and I want an answer. Is this policy still in place?
Mr. Correio, I don't play voice box for people, but if no one has an interest in having something illegal. So, like President's layer said, please email that us that it would be disturbing to all of us if there is something that is illegal. So this is the first.
Thank you. I appreciate, yeah. You're, you're not on the email yet, I don't believe. Yeah.
So you didn't email the board. So, which is fine.
Well, no, it's, 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 this is, this is Janine Velez, Joseph Cilio, Tom Panu, Mr. Gnecko, William O'Donoghue, Custom Seehan. It's in March 2023. It talks in quite explicit detail about this policy. There's charts, a year-over-year chart in comparison. So, yeah.
You know, there are people that it's fair to say did not receive it. And again, we have no interest in having things that are illegal out there. I think we can all agree with that. So just send, send it again and then we'll review it.
I certainly will. Thank you.
Frank Napoli, 32 Adam Street, Gordon City. This past week. Frank Napoli, 32 Adam Street. This past week I have been posting critical, making critical posts on local Facebook pages about specifically the ELA program in grades three to eight. I have a concern about that. I think we're headed in the wrong direction. We're in the wrong trajectory. I'm not looking at just this year. I'm looking at this pre-COVID, post-COVID. Okay, I'm comparing it not only just taking Gordon City in a vacuum. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the ELA assessment, proficiency rates on what I consider our competitive school districts like Hericks, Jericho, Great Neck, North Shore. Let's see, who did I leave out? Hericks, East Williston. Okay, just looking at those that I consider are competitive. And we're at the bottom of the list significantly so. And it's been that way since 2018. I've also taken, we don't have a math problem. We have an ELA. I posted this and I'm going to give this to the board. I don't know if you had a chance to look at social media. Assuming you don't. I think this is data-driven, but I'd like to see the board do is review this, digest it. And please forward it to the administration and open a dialogue and ask the question, why? Okay, because my, because I'm looking at the data and I am absolutely amazed. And I see now, the last two years, I'm looking at the year before last, 22, 23. I was absolutely shocked to see New High Park, Gordon City Park score better than us in ELA. Okay, grades three to eight. Shocked. I saw Plainview Old Beth Page, right on Paul with Gordon City. Same thing this year. I'm kind of perplexed about how that happens. And I'm really seeing us, what I consider our competitive school districts, I'm seeing us really at the bottom of that rung. I want you fellas to look at women, men and women, look at the charts, look at the graphs, and, and ask the administration, why? Because what I see is the elephant in this room that nobody is speaking about is, well, we have an ELA program. All I have heard, and I don't know much about this, is we talk about structured literacy, which New York State is saying they want all the school districts to implement that. We've had balanced literacy under the, under the Teachers College. Now it's morphed into comprehensive literacy. I don't know if the, if the program is wrong. I don't know if the PDs the teachers using are not effective. Okay, what I'd like to do is make a suggestion. If that's the elephant in the room, if that's the reason why our ELA scores are down, maybe we should ask, I asked the board, consider this as a suggestion. Hire an independent consultant. Okay, an independent consultant who's credentialed the structured literacy. All right, then have that independent, not, not somebody that Dr. Sin or Ms. Bowman or Ms. Kaufman recommends. You guys figure this out. You men and women on the board, figure it out. You bring somebody in to look at this. And what I'd say is number one, identify the program that we have. Okay, identify the, the assessment tools we use. Identify the PDs that we're using. Identify them. Secondly, evaluate them. All right. Third, look at these, look at the programs and say, what options? If you're going to look at structured literacy, if the state is saying we need to implement this and de-implement balanced literacy or comprehensive literacy, what exactly what literacy programs with this structural literacy recommend? What PDs they recommend? And what assessment tools? And give us a cost analysis. Find out how much this had cost us and a timeline. That's all. I think that's just, you know, if we have a problem, let's look at it, turn the corner, address it and move on. We need to do something. And this is the future of Gordon City. These kids, I'm not talking about these kids that are in high school that are knocking it out in the park. We're talking about these young kids. You know, like, look this year, I mean, I want to just throw a figure out to you. Twenty-nine percent, almost thirty percent of the kids in three to eight are not reading at grade level. Do you know that third grade, thirty-four percent aren't? And the fourth grade, thirty-two percent? I mean, this isn't a one-off. This isn't just this year. I want you to look at the data, look at the stuff, open up a dialogue with the, with the, with the administration and ask why. And, and please consider using, looking at a structured, a consultant that's a credentialed and structured literacy.
No, Frank, I'm sorry, Ms. Napoli. One of the things that Mr. Cilio and I were looking at, we kind of looked at how the kids progress. So in other words, you know, over the past three years, you looked at the third grade in twenty-two, the fourth grade in twenty-three, the fifth grade in twenty-four, it's the same group of kids. So you're looking at apples and apples as opposed to apples and oranges. And I mean, one of the things that we noticed was, I, I mean, there were decreases in three of the, because obviously there's four. There, in three of the four. So this is something that we are concerned about. And I think you astutely pointed out that, I mean, just considering with the math, but I mean, this is a definite concern.
We don't have a math problem, an ELA problem. And what I'd like to say is we just, we received today with the, with the student achievement report. We finally got some NWEA data. I have not had a chance to post this on social media, but I made a table for you folks. And what I did was I wanted to show the importance of, it's not just ELA. ELA, the NWEA correlates to the, NWEA correlates to the ELA state, state assessments. And you can look at it. It's not just the decline in the state assessments. You can look and see this decline in NWEA, in NWEA RIT scores as well. So it's in here. There's a lot of data. I have nothing to hide. I would just like you to take a hard look at it and, and talk about it, open up a dialogue and just answer the question, why?
I would just say, Ms. Napoli, we are, we are looking at the data. We, we appreciate, you know, some of your comments. We do dive in. We have, we have been diving in with members of the administration, the team over here. To your point on the consultant, we are planning on interviewing consultants in short, short form to interview with the board and the administration to find somebody to look at this with a fresh set of eyes. So that was, maybe, maybe you missed it earlier because I know it was, you know, two and a half hours ago or whatever it was. But we did, we did mention that and that is part of the plan because it's always good to get a fresh set of eyes and see if there's things we can do better. Because I think everybody up here wants what you want. We want to do better. And so I think we're all pushing in the same direction. I know we all have different views, but it'd be great to get a consultant to give us another view and look at the data.
Also have, you know, a disk. It's on a PowerPoint. It's on the disk, a stick drive in case you guys want to use it. And one of the things I just want to mention, looking around, it's not like people don't care.
Right.
Because I can tell you, I monitor the posts. Some of my posts that have been up there, we've had over a post reach of over six thousand and some, another post reach of over five thousand views on that. So people in the village are looking at this. So it's something that, you know, I think is kind of important.
Thank you.
I mean, one of the other things that we were looking at too, Mr. Napoli, is how many questions kids are off out of the three? I mean, of course, there's a secret formula that Albany has that they're not going to share with us, but you could take a guess.
Hi, Deborah Dangler, 142 Kildare Road. I'm here to talk about the ELA and specifically the class of 2031. I have older children. They're in the class of twenty-one, class of twenty-three. I have one in the class of twenty-seven. And my youngest is now in the class of 2031. And I'm very proud of all the data Mr. Steingruber showed with the APs, the college courses, everything. My kids excelled in the high school and they did well in the high school. They've done well in college because of what they learned in Homestead, in Stratford, and in the middle school. You can't do well in one if you're not doing well in the other. It's a progression. So when I look at my son in, in sixth grade at his English curriculum that he's having this year, I see drastic differences to the English curriculum that my older three children had when they were in sixth grade. And I wanted to illustrate it so you could understand what I see in the changes with the curriculum. And maybe that will help explain why we're seeing the decline in the ELA grades. So I charted it, if you'd like to look at it. As you can see, Mr. Ray Goerwein was a teacher in sixth grade for the class of twenty-one. And I compared what they learned in the first quarter in sixth grade for the class of 2021, the class of 2023, and the class of 2027. And you'll see a list of their assessments for each quarter. So they had spelling and vocabulary tests, chapter one, chapter two, chapter three. They read a book called Where the Red Fern Grows. They had a test on it. The books were split into two or three tasks. They would read a chapter as a whole class. They would discuss it. They would learn vocabulary words for each chapter. Then they would have questions based on the chapter that they had to write about. So they were learning everything at the same time. They were learning spelling, vocabulary, reading, writing, everything and grammar. They had a noun test. And what I was surprised when I looked, they had different teachers, but they pretty much all stayed on track. And even my child who was in sixth grade when we were on remote, which was every other day, amazingly, the teacher stayed on track and they learned pretty much the same thing, the three quarters. But then when my fourth child in the class of 2031 entered sixth grade, everything was different. So we went from two periods of English to one period of English. And I was a little, I was concerned about that. And I did speak to Mr. Samuelson about my concerns. We've gone from two periods to one period because I saw the decline in English for the class of 2031. And I really thought they would benefit from two periods of English. So anyway, the quarter started and I reached out to his teachers. I did speak to Mr. Samuelson. And I was concerned because they weren't having vocabulary tests. They weren't having spelling tests. They weren't reading a book together as a class. Instead, the teacher reads the book out loud and they have to sit there and listen. And they don't have a copy of the book. So he's not even seeing the spelling. He's not seeing the grammar. It's just, it's a very different experience. He's not having spelling vocabulary tests. I don't see the grammar. I don't see the spelling. I don't see the vocabulary. I don't see him learning that. And that's my concern because I know the rigor of high school. I know what's on the SAT. I know what he's going to face. And I know what his classmates are going to face. And those are my concerns. And I was wondering if you've looked into the difference in the curriculum because it's switched after the class of 2027. A new English curriculum was introduced. And then I noticed the decline in the ELA scores. So if you look on the fourth column, these are the tests that my, the class of 2031 had. They only had two tests. The rest of the assessments are homeworks and classworks. And you see a drastic difference between the testing through the four years. So I didn't know if we could discuss, if you guys have looked into the impact of not giving the kids vocabulary books and teaching vocabulary, the spelling, the grammar. He did get a grammar packet sent home. It wasn't the same grammar that my other three children had. They had a grade six book. These were grade four and grade five grammar sheets that my sixth grader was getting. So I'm concerned about him receiving grade level materials as a sixth grader. And all of them, because there's only three English teachers now in sixth grade. Cluster A has one English teacher. Cluster B has one English teacher and Cluster C has one English teacher. And they're all doing the same stuff. So it's not like it's just one class. It's across the board, the whole grade. So those are my concerns. I didn't know if anybody had looked into the impact of removing the vocabulary, the spelling, the change in ELA.
I mean, Matthew, I don't know if you want to address it or we can, you know, have it, have it addressed kind of offline if there's a longer conversation to be had.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to speak to you on this topic, Ms. Dangler. This is certainly something that we've thought about carefully. And we have felt very strongly for some time that vocabulary instruction should be something that happens in situ, which, which is to say, through the context of a text as opposed to a workbook. We are very satisfied with that, with the outcomes we have, our vocabulary instruction, as well as our grammar instruction. But I'd be very happy to have a conversation with you on this topic if you'd like.
Thank you. It's just that the vocabulary, if you look at the SAT, you look at the PSAT, you know, the reading section is split into four sections and vocabulary makes up twenty-five percent. Now, my other three kids did learn vocabulary while they read the books and in the content in other classes. But they also had that sadlier vocabulary book in grades four, five, six, seven and eight. And that seems to have been removed. So all those antonyms, synonyms that they learned, the definitions, the class of 2031 wasn't getting them. And they're not getting that in sixth grade. So that's my concern because that impacts reading comprehension. And I do see, if you look at the second sheet, I look at the class of 2027, they were eighty-nine percent proficient. That's the curriculum that you saw. Now I look at the class of 2030, they're seventy percent proficient. So we went from twenty-eight students not proficient to now a hundred and six students not proficient. And I'm looking at the impact of not teaching the vocabulary, the spelling, the grammar. And I just think it's something that should be looked at.
We can, we can look into that and we, we'll, we'll share the sheets with the administration. We'll, we'll have them reach out to answer your question or have a further dialogue on that.
Thank you. Because my goal is for the class of 2031 to be like the class of 2023. Thank you, cuz my goal is for the class of twenty-three-one to be like the class of twenty-twenty-three. I want to see them excel, and I want Mr. Steinbruner in a few years to be standing here proud of the data of the class of twenty-three-one. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, it's Norah Delacamera, once on Set Lane. I've been here numerous times advocating about literacy. I do not have a vested interest or any financial gain for advocating about literacy. I do this because I care. My son was diagnosed with dyslexia in first grade, and because of that, I became very passionate about literacy. I do not have a financial gain or any kind of, um, benefit I derive from it, except that I just hope other kids can learn to read and write at grade level too, despite challenges, because it is possible. I've seen it with my own son who started at a reading rate of zero in first grade when I was told that he would never be a grade-level reader. He accomplished that. He got to grade-level reading. There's always bumps in the road cuz he requires more repetition than other kids. But I'm not here about him. I'm here about, in general, the overview of the literacy instruction here could be so much better. Gordon City is a wonderful community, wonderful place to live. I can't say enough great things about the teachers, the supportive, um, staff, and everybody that tries to help the children that are really here cuz they care. And that's why I'm here, because I care too. Um, and going back to the data that we were just talking about, you guys have a ton of data and are able to analyze a lot of data and make decisions that are data-driven. Um, when the charts were presented before, I'm just a little confused with the NWEA and how it correlates to the ELA. And I'm hoping that you can clarify, because when I was looking at the NWA correlation chart, it shows that if you are at or below the sixtieth percentile, you're not proficient at that point for that benchmark. So in the charts that were just shown, it looked like the red or the orange or whatever shades of them at the fiftieth percent were being considered proficient. But according to the NWA correlation chart, it's not. Anything below sixtieth percentile is considered at risk for not making the grade-level benchmarks, um, for that year. And then looking at the MTSS plan that we have, we don't offer supports until students are beneath the thirty-fifth percentile, which would put them at at least six months behind their typical peers, or six months behind that, what they should have learned for the year. Um, and that's even very hard to catch up from. When I called other school districts in the area that are considered, um, I guess more about our peer districts, I guess, like your Jericho, your Menhasset, you know, those types of school districts, they start giving their MTSS supports once their students, uh, start to decrease past the sixtieth percentile. They don't wait till the thirty-fifth percentile. They're offering their MTSS supports at that moment when they're at risk. So I'm just curious as far as, when you look at the data with whatever computer system or whatever program you have, how do you use that data to drive instructional changes or instructional support so you get children before they fail? Because I feel like once you wait for them to be six months behind, it's very hard to catch up from that, especially when you don't necessarily, legally, you don't have to notify a parent until you put them in AIS and they have, or MTSS, and they have to go to the extra help from what I understand, you know, please correct, correct me if I'm mistaken. So then the parents may not be aware, because you want to believe your kids are learning, they're getting good grades. Lots of times, my son would get nineties and eighties, you know, in high eighties, but he still couldn't necessarily do everything independently on his own to a level of mastery that would be expected for that grade, you know? Um, so if the parent isn't made aware until they're six months behind, how can the parent get a tutor or help their child at home too? Because this is a community that likes to help their kids. We're not gonna sit back and just watch our kids struggle, you know? But if we're not aware of it, or, you know, people are waiting and watching and just being hopeful and giving them more time, that's time that, that child doesn't have, can't get back. And more social-emotional issues happen then too. They start feeling bad about themselves. You know, reading is a first job a child has. And if they can't master reading, they start to feel bad about themselves. They feel like a failure. So it does contribute a lot to social-emotional well-being and just a sense of belonging amongst their peers when they're, they feel that they're not catching it as quick. And then it also affects all other content areas. So I guess the main question is, how does data drive instruction? Are we looking at the sixtieth percentile? And the fact that they're at risk when they fall beneath that? And do your graphs correspond with that information? Because it was just confusing the way the, the colors were.
Okay, uh, can I start by asking a couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay, you had mentioned that you reached out to some of our comparator districts to discuss their MTSS plans. Can you give me a little?
No, just to ask where the cut scores were. And there might be.
Give me a little bit more.
I can't, cuz it was a while ago, but I know that it was at the sixtieth percentile. I could find it and I can email it to you. Yeah, that would be great. Cuz I think it's on their website.
That would be great.
Sure.
Um, you also addressed parent communication. I think it's important to note that our teachers do a great job of.
No, they do. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that you don't have to say, you don't necessarily put on alert that your child needs extra support until they enter that, the MTSS, the tier two. You know, you're not saying like the child needs extra help or extra support or mandated support, however it's worded in the letter. But I know that a letter goes out to inform parents that their child now is in getting the tier-two level of support. But in our district, it takes almost six months. You have to fall beneath the thirty-fifth percentile. And that's, you know, but once you're beneath the sixtieth, you're at risk of not making grade level. So maybe there's a way to communicate that. Sorry.
For our kids to be failing, to communicate to parents or have interventions in the classroom, educated, listening to you. So they may not be getting a formal letter. There's the strategies that teachers are using. They do that on a.
Right, I'm not talking about it in school. I'm sure they are. I'm saying, what if a parent, if a parent knows about, you know?
It's a communication between parent and, and parent and teacher.
Right, but sometimes there could be a disconnect, and the parent may not be aware. They could be helping them more at home. That's all I'm saying. But they may not know.
Teachers communicate, um, those processes for, for teachers to communicate with our parents, and they do do that.
Okay, but I, I think what I'm trying to say is, parents, looking at your graph, which came out great, and this presentation was very well put together and very professional, it's a little bit misleading, cuz you're thinking that if your child is in the fiftieth percentile, they're okay. You're not there at risk of not being proficient. So I don't know if parents understand that if you're beneath the sixtieth percentile, these are benchmarks. Obviously, benchmarks aren't a hundred percent cor, cor, they're not gonna correlate a hundred percent, but they're pretty close, you know, and they.
Uh, yeah, a, a couple of things. The, um, the norms referenced on the NWEA are by percentiles, but the average, high average, and high ranges that you're referencing, those are on grade level.
Um, so I'm talking about the cut score. Once you get to the cut score, like for instance in.
The cut score, are you talking about the state assessments now?
No, I'm talking about the cut score for RIT. If you look at the NWA correlate table to ELAs, there's a cut score. So if you're below that cut score, like for instance, two-twenty-one.
Do you mean the?
Yeah, the NWA norm table that correlates, it's not national, it's, it's specific to New York, cuz it's in New York, the ELAs correlate table to the NWA. So for instance, two-twenty-one is a cut score for eighth grade. I think, I think it's for eighth grade, um, for, um, your fall RIT. So ours is.
So this is spring data. Just so you know, the, the data on these slides is spring data.
Oh, it's, I thought. You did spring or you did fall?
Spring, spring to spring. Because if we're using spring data, if, if the state assessments are administered in a season closer to the spring, it made more sense for us to use spring NWEA data.
Really? Cuz I checked it with the table and it looked like it was fall. Unless, you know what? It could be spring, because you know what? The numbers, the numbers didn't really move. They stayed the same.
It's spring.
Like two-twenty. Well, the current ninth-grade class over the past two years has not had a growth in RIT. They've been at two-twenty, two-twenty-one, two-twenty-two and two-twenty-one the whole time, which is not indicative of much growth in ELA at all.
I think Dr. Delacamera, we'd have to look into your specific questions.
Yeah.
And I think we're just gonna keep going back and forth. So Dr. Bowman will look into that and go back to you.
Thank you. Sure.
Watch your step.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Share one more thing. I forgot to mention before. There was a science research, it was called Handwriting May Boost Brain Connections More Than Typing Does. I don't know if anybody is familiar with that. I noticed it's a different, it's another variable that's different from the class of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three with ELA compared to now, is the impact that the Chromebook has had on English. Um, there was a new feature that the district added, and every Sunday I can see what period, um, and how much time my child spends on the Chromebook throughout the day. It's a great feature. I can even see every, um, page he's gone to, what he's doing. And one thing I noticed tracking his data is he spends the most time on his Chromebook in English class. I don't know if anybody was aware of that. Um, and last year in fifth grade, the spelling program was all on the Chromebook. So instead of my child writing out all his spelling words, um, like my other children did, you write it two, three times. And that's an easy way to remember it. He was clicking and dragging on the, on the Chromebook. So that method didn't work well for him, and I noticed that in the beginning of the school year, for the first two weeks, the kids didn't have Chromebooks. They were all handwriting. And then the third week, he was, he wasn't in school for a week. And each teacher had a different way of teaching, a different style. Some, it was he had to write everything. Some was on the Chromebook. And I noticed that everything he wrote, he remembered. But then when I asked him about information that he had done on the Chromebook, he didn't remember it. So I noticed that change with him, and if it's affecting my child, I think it could be affecting other children. I think maybe more handwriting in school could help them in English class with remembering, writing it out, especially with spelling, that could really help the lower grades. I don't know if anybody looked into that, the spelling program.
We, we can look into that. I mean, I personally had concerns about computer testing. I'm sure everybody here has heard me say that before. It's, different learners have different ways. But if you know that specifically about your child, you should definitely have a conversation with the teacher or somebody in the school to see if there's, you know, things.
Last year, I did discuss it then with all the high school teachers, and they noticed the difference. And they go, no, all the kids are writing with packets. You know, that's how they remember. And I said, oh, that's interesting, because in Stratford, it was heavily on the Chromebook. And now in middle school, with all different teachers, you see all the different styles and you see what works and what doesn't work. But for the majority of kids, maybe in English, it would be better to spend more time on paper and pencil than on the Chromebook. It was just a thought.
Thank you. I appreciate that. There are no other questions and comments. Announcements, future Board of Education meeting is Tuesday, December seventeenth next week. Uh, twenty-twenty-four, regular session at eight fifteen here at the Garden City High School. The meeting will be moved to the auditorium. Also make a note of that. May have a motion that there's no further business to come before the board and that the meeting be adjourned.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Liz has got to sit with the gavel one time, she's very excited about the gavel.